Good evening. Welcome to the July 11th, 2022 meeting of the Stillwater City Council. It's been awhile since we've been here, so I'm gonna fumble a little bit. But at this time, I will call the meeting to order, and I'll ask that you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. First up, item three on the agenda is the consent docket. Counselors, questions, motions, or items you'd like to see removed from the consent docket?
I'd like to pull item 3F for separate consideration.
And I'd like to pull item C.
We will pull item 3C and 3F from the consent docket. Is there a motion on the remaining items?
Motion to approve consent docket. With the exception of C and F.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket, except for item C and F. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the consent docket minus item C and F is approved. Don't have anyone sign up for public comment on items not scheduled for public hearing tonight, so we will move to items removed from the consent docket, and we'll start with item C.
Yes. I always like to pull this item. It's the Stillwater History Museum at the Sherwar Quarterly Report, and we have the director, Amelia Chamberlain, here. Once again, this is such a hidden gem in our community, and this quarterly report just gives us an update. I encourage everyone now that it's online to look to see what this museum is doing. Currently, right now, I guess in the spring, in this last quarter, they went through some strategic planning. They came up with a new mission for the museum, a little bit shorter one, my understanding. I'm sorry, I left my notes. It's my first day back from vacation, so I'm winging it. But, and then also, I guess, happening this summer, they have kind of a, I'm gonna miss, probably misquote it. It's a cool jazz concert series that's happening in the museum, in the amphitheater area, which is gonna be wonderful. And that is done, Amelia, I might just have you come up, because I'm probably fumbling this, but that and a wedding dress showcase. And then, as a personal love for me, and a fundraiser for the museum, you can get a Stillwater stemless wine glass or a tumbler if you choose to drink something other than wine. They're also good for water. It is 107 out, so I'm just saying. So Amelia, I'll just give a couple highlights on the quarterly report.
The items are engraved with the city map of Stillwater. OSU's on there, all the rest, so they're really cool.
They are.
No pun intended. But anyway, yes, we had our first cool classics concert series last Friday night, was very popular. We had about 60 show up. Usually, we have around 100, but we had some competition with the community center in their movie. The wedding display, there are over 100 years of wedding dresses, and that may sound a little bit boring to some of us, but I'll assure you, it is not. We dug deep, and we found pictures and stories. There's one dress from Cushing, and the bride and groom part took in the, I guess it's a chivalry kind of a thing, where the bride was escorted around Cushing in a wheelbarrow. Don't ask me why, but there are other communities that do it, not just hers. But I also found a really cool book, and some of you may have read in the newspaper or different things. It was part of the Jardot family. It's a little book of memoirs that I wouldn't have found unless I had read about it in the newspaper when I was doing genealogy research on the particular dress that we have. But Dorcas Blauyn Hansen wrote a little book, and it was in the Stillwater Alumni Association Museum, which the public library and the museum are slowly kind of sorting things through. And that little treasure, that little gem was in there. I was so excited.
Well, I just want to thank you. I encourage anyone to please go visit this wonderful museum. Amelia does a wonderful job, and certainly will answer any questions, so please remember to visit that. So thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you for being here. Vice Mayor, do you have a motion on item 3C?
I move, make a motion to accept item C in the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept item C on the consent docket. Please vote. That item is accepted with a vote of four to zero. And thank you so much for highlighting that. Thank you, Amelia, for being here. I was in the Sherwar Center a little while ago, and the exhibits are just really cool. For anybody who's been interested in Stillwater history, you should definitely go take a look. We will move to item 3F. This is an item regarding bond issuance. I will go ahead and make a motion to approve item 3F from the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this item. Please vote. That item is approved with a vote of three to zero, with Counselor Clark not participating. Tony, it's been three weeks, I can't even remember you guys' names.
It's also 100 degrees out.
That's true. Let's put it, yeah. Lots of reasons that I shouldn't. All right. That takes us to item six on the agenda, public hearings. First up, is a public hearing, receive public comment regarding a request for a map amendment to rezone property addressed to 701 West Boomer Lake Station Road from P Public and Commercial CG to multifamily intermediate District RMI, CC-22-129. Ms. Carley, do we have good notice?
Yes, we do.
Ms. Porter?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Jaclyn Porter, the city planner, presenting on behalf of the Planning Department for the map amendment at 701 Boomer Lake Station Drive from PG and CG to RMI. Here's the area map of the subject property. It is south of Lakeview between Washington and Husband. Here's the aerial map. The subject property is located west of the southern portion of Boomer Lake. The subject property used to be the city of Stillwater Electric Generating Station. To the west is LifeNet and Quality Water Service along Boomer. Here's a street view looking south from Lakeview. Here is the current zoning map. It's currently zoned public with general commercial. Part of the subject property was rezoned last year to the current zoning. At the time of rezoning last year, it was believed that the generators were not available to be removed. It was recently found that the generators can be removed and developed on, so the applicant is requesting that the RMI zoning district include the public section in the CG strip along the west portion of the property to RMI. Future land use map is used from the 2030 Comprehensive Plan that reflects the desired use of the community at the time of the adoption of the Comprehensive Plan. As you see, the subject property is proposed to be parks and open space with commercial located west and to the south. Erin with Keystone Engineering is here to represent the applicant on this project. Mayor and council members, are there any questions for staff?
Counselors, any questions? Just so I'm clear, we're just talking about that little square of public that we kept out the last time we did this, because those generators sit right there, correct?
Yes, it's gonna be there, and they're also going to extend the zoning, because they had a panhandle there.
Understood, yeah.
And so they're just gonna make that whole portion RMI.
Okay. Those colors are kind of similar on the map that I have here.
Yes, and the hash marks don't help either.
Okay. Thank you. Counselors, any further questions for staff? Thank you, Jaclyn. At this time, I will open the public hearing. The owner's representative is here.
Hello, Erin Ferguson with Keystone Engineering, located at 923 South Lowry. It's been covered pretty well, but last time, this was before you. It was understood at the time that the generators couldn't be removed, and since then, has been determined that they can be removed, so we are just requesting that the area is owned public, and that little strip zoned CS be rezoned, so that we can incorporate that area into the project.
Thanks, sir. Any questions? Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
I don't have anyone else signed up for the public hearing tonight, so I will close the public hearing. Jaclyn, can you let us know, I guess there was a Planning Commission recommendation on this one?
Planning Commission recommended approve with a vote of five to zero.
Thank you so much. Counselors?
Motion to accept the Planning Commission recommendation to approve the map amendment for property located at 701 West Boomer Lake Station Road.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning. Please vote. It's approved with a vote of four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, 7A, receive the Stillwater Area Sports Association Annual Report from Carolyn Wallston.
Good evening. Let me bring my presentation up. There we are. Good evening, I'm Carolyn Wallston. I'm Executive Director for Stillwater Area Sports Association, also known as SASSA, and appreciate you giving me a few moments to talk about our year. It's been an amazing, quick year. I need to talk closer. Okay. I've never been told that I need to do that. So here are just a few of our current, for our 2022, our leagues. I do have three seasons for adult volleyball, and these current numbers are just for the two, the spring and the summer. Same with our adult softball, which they are playing tonight, so you might say a little extra prayer for them. They do have free water, but we have games at 6:30, 7:30, and 8:30 out at airport for our adult softball. But we also have a fall season that these numbers don't reflect that. Our adult basketball begins in November. Currently, my SASSA tennis lessons, we have 63 registered. We do have a third session beginning July the 18th. It's Monday through Thursday out at the tennis courts. Currently, I think I have 13 more registered for the session three, but I didn't include those. Pickleball, hot item. We have pickleball in the SASSA Armory Gym, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. It used to be kind of Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Now they've kind of migrated in all week long. It's aged, very ranges from college kids to older segments, but they are passionate, and they love their pickleball. Love the new floor, too. This is pretty impressive. Our youth softball, baseball numbers, we had 92 league teams for spring. That doesn't even include our fall, which registration opens July the 18th. By far, that's the highest registration that we've ever had, so very proud of that. We have flag football registering, also opens July the 18th. We had 24 teams last year. And our basketball, our youth basketball, our numbers are crazy good, so that registration begins in October, but for last year, we had 74 teams. So we have a lot of youth and adult participation. We offer 203 youth participations, either reduced or completely free. That is an application process, basically, that we honor any free or reduced through the schools. Participation, it's just kind of a very visual graph, that it shows the different, the youth baseball, again, is only 780, but that is for one season only. We haven't, don't have our fall numbers yet. This is just on a Tuesday night at Strickland Park. It is definitely a family affair. The park is full. We are happy to have people back in the park. We do have our parks full, Monday, Tuesdays, and Thursday evenings with games, and then our tournaments are typically held Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. SASSA held seven U-Trip tournaments last year, and our revenue was good. So thank you again for your allocations. Our tournaments, we use the adult fields for the KIO tournament, which is a Friday, Saturday, Sunday night. We, I won't go over each of them, but we did have seven U-Trip sanctioned tournaments, which came out to be 278 teams that played in Stillwater this year, which is incredible. We had a lot of games from a Friday night, beginning at 5, until Sunday, sometimes ending at 10, 11 o'clock at night. We also hosted youth volleyball at OSU over the holidays, and we have that scheduled also, again, for December. We have an adult softball tournament for the Kevin Cook Memorial. Kevin was a longtime umpire of ours and passed away from cancer, so the family does this as a memorial, and then the funds are used through a scholarship for Glencoe students. And then we hosted for the Stillwater Public Schools five different OSSAA sanctioned events at Babcock for youth softball. So there's our tournaments. We had 278, and so petition, participation wise, that was 3,336 actual players that played in Stillwater for our tournaments. That's just my league. This, I think, is impressive, and I've never mentioned this before in any of my presentations, but our community service and involvement, we had over 350 volunteer coaches, which is hundreds of hours of, there's one of them. That's right. Justin coaches two teams for us. This is, again, pretty impressive if you look at that. So SASSA gives the opportunity for practices and games in an eight-week period, almost 50,000 opportunities for a family to be involved in Stillwater through softball, baseball, flag football. I did receive this ratio from Visit Stillwater, but I think this is pretty impressive for seven tournaments. Anticipated visitor spending, 1.7 million, and then the taxes, sales tax would be just right around 60,000. Again, that is only figured on a, two nights, and several of our tournaments were Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So I do feel that this is a fairly accurate conservative number. We do partner with OSU as much as we can. We have OSU cowgirls that, and the OSU basketball, that our teams go in scrimmage during pregame and at halftime, and it's a huge hit. We have OSU tennis players that are SASSA instructors. We received baseball ticket discounts for any time that the Cowboys were in town and we had a baseball tournament. And then we did host the OSU volleyball tournament at the Colvin, which Wedlake was very happy. His daughter played. He was happy to stay in town. He was very complimentary of being able to play. And I did just, this is just our capital improvements, investments for purchased in 2022. I did go ahead and leave our equipment, just because it's showing on our balance sheet, but this is all things that we have purchased for the programs in 2022. In our plans for '23, we need some type of shade structure for Wittenburg. It is brutal out there, and there is no shade structure, so that is on our capital improvement plan. We do hope to hold a pickleball tournament. We are doing field improvements at all fields. We do have Strickland closed right now, doing some massive field improvements that will be beneficial. We're gonna host two, I mean, two youth softball tournaments and have adult softball tournaments. Joey Graham comes and does youth basketball academies. And then, again, we're planning on doing the volleyball tournament at OSU. So there's lots of, lots of different activities for you to come and be involved in SASSA. We have cornhole that OSU comes in and plays. We also did a spike ball tournament for some OSU students. We have morning walkers. Our senior league plays on Tuesday nights. It's anybody 65 or older. I currently have three teams playing in that. So we have something going on pretty much Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Fridays. Happy endings. And thanks again to my board. Thanks, Jake, for coming. And any questions?
Thank you, Carolyn. Counselors, any questions?
I would just say thank you for all the opportunities you provide for adults and kids, for the health benefits, for the things that playing sports can help kids develop, the qualities, and so just thank you for everything that SASSA does.
Thank you. We appreciate the support of the council and the mayor and Barb. We have a good partnership.
I like the pretty pictures in your report, but I wish you had some pictures of Babcock's parking lot.
Oh, I didn't want to bring that up.
That's the stuff we need to talk about.
Well, I believe that's on schedule, yes. It was an issue.
Well, I don't think it's your issue. I don't mean to say that it's a SASSA problem. It's a facility problem.
The parks are full.
Yeah. And that's a good, it's a good problem to have.
It is a great problem. With soccer numbers growing and our numbers growing, we, I'll be honest, there's just not enough fields and not enough parking spaces.
What would you say are the, from a facility standpoint, what do you feel like, where the, where, if you had money to spend on facilities, where would you put it first?
I would love to have a complex of six fields together with adequate parking. It's really hard if you've got multiple kids, and some are playing at Strickland, some are over at Babcock, some are. I think we can maximize our expenses if I was in one place. When we have a tournament, I'm at five different sites, so I have five different fields, five supervisors, five sets of equipment, five sets of maintenance. So expense-wise, if I was more combined into one complex, that would be ideal. Less headaches. I literally can, it takes me 47 minutes to make my rounds on a baseball weekend tournament. That's if there's no issues. But parking is a problem. I mean, it's a problem at Strickland even, when I have all four parks are filled, and now that we have Maya's Promise and that park being filled. But it's a good problem to have. So I think the city and the council came up with a good Band-Aid, if we will, when we opened up that other overflow grass in Babcock. That did seem to eliminate some, but the problem's gonna continue to grow, in my opinion. Our numbers are large. They won't be as large in the fall typically, but if we have 92 again in the fall, soccer's numbers are growing, too.
So a complex with baseball and softball fields of varying sizes, so that you can do multiple events at the same time?
Yes.
What, what's your solution on pickleball? What do you think we should do there?
Pickleball, so they came to us, came to me several years ago, when Total Health was closed because of a fire code. And so we quickly adapted and put in three pickleball courts. When we renovated the gym, they did assist and fundraise for some lights, for the LED lights. And then, of course, I got the grant from the Brown Foundation for the new floor. But the heat, there's no air conditioning, and it is very hot in there. But all three courts are being used. So they would like to have an air-conditioned facility that has more hours of access, probably. They would like something in the evening hours for them. My, the SASSA gym, Armory Gym, is used for youth basketball practices, my adult volleyball. There's very few evenings that it's open, besides Wednesdays and Fridays. They would like to have some evening hours. They would like to have some weekend hours. So if they had a facility, in their ideal way, they would like four courts, air-conditioned, with evening hours and weekends. So if you can do your magic wand, I think they would be happy.
Are outdoor courts also a possibility, or?
They are. They, I would say that they would appreciate and open that conversation up, because when, on nice day, honestly, right now, it's, it would be better for them to play outside than it would in the SASSA gym, SASSA Armory Gym at some points, because there is no air. And at least outside, they might get some breeze. Several of them have asked about, you know, is there any other facility? And truly, the only other facility that's indoors is the Total Health, and it's one court. But it, there is a demand. I mean, we can't shun away from that, but I think if they did have the outdoor option, I think that it could ease some of the numbers that are in the gym.
Okay. What else, facilities-wise, or what else can we do to help you guys do what you do better?
Honestly, the parking is probably, that was the biggest strain that we had this year. Again, Barb and I have a great working relationship, and if there's a plumbing issue, she's right on it. So I, I think our partnership works well for the way that it's set up, for us to work together. And there's things that the city can definitely handle that I can't handle. Yeah. Complex parking.
Okay.
I would love to have, you know, so when SASSA was started, and I went to the schools and put our youth basketball into the elementary schools, that's truly the only way that our numbers could grow. And the SASSA Armory Gym is too small. I mean, it only has two courts and not adequate seating for any games. We did make it work during COVID, and we put our little hoops in there. But ideally, if you did build another facility that had basketball, volleyball courts in it, it would be maximized, too. I guess the old saying that if you build it, they will come, and they will come for indoors, they will come for the softball, baseball.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate everything you do. It's been, you know, we played various things, baseball. I've got tennis lessons coming up, and we always appreciate what you do.
And yes, I saw you in the park the night that there was cars everywhere.
It's always a feeling, it's like, I'm really excited to see so many people in the park, and then I'm also like, oh, this is just gonna cause more problems.
Yes.
But we appreciate the work that you guys have done to figure out solutions.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Carolyn. All right. That takes us to item 7B, Consider a Bid Award to Highlight Airfield Services. And Paul Prigel's gonna tell us about it.
Good evening. Paul Prigel, Airport Director. Tonight, I bring before you a bid award and also a budget amendment for your consideration. We regularly have to maintain our airfield markings, and they generally last about three years. So our last time we did our main runway, which is runway 1735, was late 2017, early 2018, so they are due for rubber removal and remark. And so we have put together a competitive bid, went out, bids were open June 8th, 2022. Three bids were submitted, and highlight airfield services was the low bidder at $102,271. That bid has been evaluated by our engineer of record, LBR Incorporated, and found to be fair and reasonable. We've also, as mentioned earlier, prepared a budget amendment appropriating the project funds, and I would be happy to answer any questions before giving a recommendation.
Thank you, Paul. Counselors? Paul, where's the, where's this money coming from?
This was budgeted in the FY '23 capital projects for the city.
And what's your recommendation for us?
A motion to award bid to highlight airfield services in the amount of $102,271 for the remark of runway 1735 and connecting taxiways. Authorize the city manager to sign all contract documents and approve budget amendments appropriating project funds.
Thank you, sir. Counselors?
Move to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the staff's recommendation. Please vote. It's approved with a vote of four to zero. Thank you, Paul. Next time you're up here, I want you to explain why the runway is numbered 17-35. There's one runway, right?
Yes.
There's gotta be a reason for that.
There is.
Okay. Next time. That takes us to item 8. Resolutions, 8A is Resolution CC-2022-20. A resolution activating an increment district previously designated as Increment District X as Increment District Number Five, City of Stillwater pursuant to the provision of the 2022 amended Stillwater reinvestment plan, a Stillwater Downtown Campus Link Project Plan, and Section 856B2 of the Local Development Act, 62OS, Section 850 and following. This is the resolution, as we all recall, this increment district was approved, and then had to be activated once the actual building was closed on, and so that's what we'd be doing with this resolution. Any questions? Comments or motions?
Motion to adopt Resolution Number CC-2022-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. That resolution is approved with a vote of four to zero. Item 8B is Resolution CC-2022-21. A resolution of the City Council approving Stillwater Regional Airport budget amendments reflecting the receipt and appropriation of grant funds and any required sponsor match to complete the master plan update for the purchase of snow removal equipment and for electrical and lighting rehabilitation at Stillwater Regional Airport through FAA Grants 3-40-0090-033-2021, and 3-40-0090-036-2022. Paul?
Crystal clear, right?
Yeah.
All right.
I don't need you to explain me those numbers, and we'll get to the airstrip numbering after this, but let us know your comments on the resolution.
Okay. On the resolution, so in November of 2021, brought before you Resolution 2021-42, which authorized us to make application using our entitlement funds. Our entitlement funds, if you'll remember, are awarded to an airport, a million dollars. Our entitlement funds, uh, if you'll remember, are awarded to an airport a million dollars per year after we reach ten thousand commercial employments. And that money can be reinvested back into our airport. And so in, in November, uh, you authorized me to go out and make application to use these funds for the identified projects of phase two, which is the final phase of our master plan update, to purchase snow removal equipment and to do some electrical and lighting rehabilitation. We submitted all of that. Um, all of this has been awarded. But as it, excuse me, as it's made its way through the FAA system, it has been spit out into three different grant numbers, even though it's the same pot of money. So as we were preparing these reports and the budget amendments, it just made a lot more sense for us to do this via resolution, which is why we're doing this a little bit different. So the resolution itself is to, um, not only approve the budget amendments, but also acknowledge the city's obligation for these grants. And I was going to run through those real quick. The master plan update, again, this is the second half. Uh, this was awarded, uh, last year as a multi-year grant. And, uh, this year's funds of three hundred and forty three thousand, five hundred and sixty five dollars, uh, were awarded, um, via an amendment to the first grant. So there's not a new grant number for it, uh, but it's just this, the second tranche of money. That, uh, we were surprised to learn is awarded at a hundred percent. So we didn't have a ten percent match on that. And so that was a pleasant surprise. The snow removal equipment, um, this year is, uh, it's been also awarded as a multi-year grant. The total cost was seven hundred and four thousand, one hundred and twenty four dollars. And so what, uh, they've done is given us the first essentially half. Uh, and so that's three hundred and seventy two thousand, three hundred and ninety one. And the budget amendment will reflect that plus the sponsor match, which is seventy thousand, four hundred and forty four dollars. That is the total ten percent for the entire project. So when the second half of the funds come in next year, we won't have an additional, it'll, will have already accounted for our, our city's ten percent match. And then the final is the electrical and lighting rehab. And that total, uh, on the grant is three hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred. And the city's ten percent match is thirty five thousand, three hundred and seventy eight dollars. And that will be all completed with this grant. There will not be a second year to that. So I'm happy to, I know that's kind of spread all over the place. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Councillors, any questions?
It's comforting to know we're going to get lights.
Yes. Yeah.
Improvement of lights.
Lights improvements. Yeah, we're, we're going to be upgrading the main runway lights to LEDs. Um, and then we've had some regulator issues. Um, if you were to look at our nightly outages, we have almost nightly outages of airfield lighting in various places because of regulator issues. So we're going to get those replaced, get a brand new beacon. The beacon that's there is original to the airport, like a nineteen forty something model, has paper coated wires. Um, it's been hit by lightning at least twice since I've been there. So, uh, it's nice to get a nice bright beacon for airplanes to see us.
Absolutely.
Before we adopt the resolution, can you tell me about the airport?
Yes. So the runways are labeled based on their compass direction, dropping the zero. So depending on which direction, so for example, I said runway one seven three five. So, uh, if you're taking off, uh, of course airplanes take off and land into the wind. So if the wind is prevailing from the south, for example, they're going to land via runway one seven, which is a hundred and seventy degrees on the compass. If the, the wind is from the north, they're taking off runway three five. So when you refer to it, which is three hundred and fifty degrees, uh, so when you refer to the runway as a whole, it's runway one seven three five. Depending on which direction the wind blows is, so the pilots are told you're going to land one seven or you're going to land three five. And it just tells which direction they come in on the runway.
I knew it would be a fascinating answer and it was.
I'm going to create a PBS.
I assume this is true of all runways at all airports?
Absolutely. Yes. And when you do the math, it will always equal a hundred and eighty degrees.
Sure.
Hundred and eighty degrees from each other.
Unless they're built crooked, right?
Yeah, unless they're crooked. Every once in a while we'll see one that it's not labeled this way, but someone will error on a document and be like, hey, you got a U-shaped runway and yeah, so.
Thank you, Paul.
Absolutely.
Councillors, further questions or is there a motion on the resolution?
Move to adopt resolution CC twenty twenty two dash twenty one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. It's approved with a vote of four to zero.
Jack, for just a moment, um, Paul's been very successful in receiving grants and I just want to recognize him for that. And I wish we were, uh, as, uh, successful in general government as they have been at the airport.
Well, when he was up here for his first item, it didn't have any grant money attached to it. I was pretty disappointed. Thanks, Paul. That takes us to item nine on the agenda, ordinances. Item nine A, uh, is ordinance thirty four ninety six, an ordinance closing an easement located in the northeast quarter of section thirty five, township twenty north, range two east of the Indian Meridian. City of Stillwater, Payne County, Oklahoma, on property located on North Rogers Drive, south of Richmond, adjacent to North Rogers Drive in Parkview Estates, section ten, and repealing all ordinances to the contrary. It's my understanding this is a, uh, an ordinance related to an easement that we voted to close several meetings ago and just didn't make it onto the agenda?
Yep.
Any staff additions to that? Is that, that summarizes the issue? Councillors, questions about the ordinance thirty four ninety six? Is there, uh, recommended action or is there, is there a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance thirty four nine six.
Second.
Take that as a motion to advance ordinance thirty four ninety six to second read. And a second. And, uh, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, ordinance thirty four ninety six is moved to second reading. Reports from the officers in the board. Ms. Carnley?
Nothing to report.
Mr. McNichol?
Yes, sir. One item. Um, just want to thank our citizens. As you travel through town, you probably will find some frustration. Uh, you may experience delays with various street construction projects. We're addressing these important infrastructure concerns as quickly as possible and appreciate everyone's patience. The Perkins Road US one seventy seven construction project is a joint effort between Stillwater and the Oklahoma Department of Transportation. ODOT is working as quickly as possible to have phase one completed by fall. Their glow, goal is to halt construction for OSU game day weekend traffic and begin phase two of the project after conclusion of the OSU football season. Updates to city street projects and more information may be, is available on our website at stillwater.org. I would also point out that the bridge at Third and Perkins is closed. They are, although it looks like there may not be any activity, we've had a slight delay because of, uh, some creatures that live under the bridge. And as soon as they escape their nests, we will.
This is actual wildlife, right? Not mythical creatures or some trolls?
I had no idea we're protected. But at any rate, they are, uh, in the process of marshalling some equipment that will be there and some construction material. And then there's the bridge, uh, bridge on Husband Street, just north of the high school. That's scheduled to be finished in October. Um, with this delay on the Third and Perkins project, we're looking probably at about a year.
That that bridge will be closed?
That bridge will be closed.
Wow. And the Third Street, the Husband Street Bridge is going to be closed until October?
Hopefully. It will be done by then.
Okay. I'm sure the high school folks are going to be, uh, we've talked to the school system about bus routing and all that sort of thing?
Yes.
Good. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes. Oklahoma in July is hot. Please be mindful of your animals and how much time they spend outside. Please keep your pets safe with plenty of water. And also, if you're getting a new pet, please visit the Stillwater Animal Welfare and consider adopting. For more information, go to stillwater.org or follow Stillwater Animal Welfare on Facebook. And if you do, those faces just get you.
Yep. Yeah. If you go visit the, the shelter or even their Facebook page, you will end up with.
Yes.
Councillor Hawkins?
Uh, save the dates, July twentieth through the twenty fourth for crazy days. This is Stillwater's largest community-wide retail sales event. From Lake View Point and Pioneer Square Shopping Centers to the Strip and downtown Stillwater, there are many shops offering summertime sales for all ages. Some stores feature sidewalk sales while some will have sales racks located inside and some will have both.
All right. July twentieth through twenty fourth?
July twentieth through twenty fourth.
Mark your calendars. Councillor Clark?
As more of our residents utilize our parks and splash pad areas during the summer, we ask that everyone helps to keep our parks clean. Please remember to take all of your personal items home with you, use the trash cans located in the parks and keep our community spaces beautiful for everyone to enjoy.
Excellent reminder. I will let you know that in addition to the Stillwater Public Library's summer reading program for all ages, they're offering an outdoor movie for older teens and adults on July twenty second. The movie takes place in the library's courtyard beginning at nine PM. Attendees should bring chairs or blankets for seating. Free popcorn and drinks will be provided. This is just one of many fun events at the library, that the library is hosting this summer. And for a complete list of the library events and the descriptions, I assume also the movies that will be shown, uh, please visit library.stillwater.org. All right. That takes us to item eleven, appointments. We have a couple of different boards here that need folks appointed. First up on the library trust board, uh, there's an expired term for Sandeep Neighbor and he has, uh, indicated his, uh, willingness to be reappointed. So I will make a motion to have him to reappoint, uh, Mr. Neighbor to the library trust board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, Sandeep Neighbor is reappointed to the library trust board. Thank you for your willingness to continue to serve. On the public housing authority board, Debbie Tiger's term is expiring this year and has also, uh, expressed a desire to be reappointed. So I'll make, uh, a motion to reappoint Debbie Tiger.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Debbie Tiger to, to the public housing authority. Please vote. That's approved with a vote of four to zero. And on the board of adjustment, we have one expiring term for, uh, Tim Harden, who is, um, willing to be reappointed. We also have two vacant seats and applications from Jim Rice and Brian Wiles. So I will move to reappoint Tim Harden to the seat that he occupies, to appoint Jim Rice to the vacant seat that expires in twenty twenty three and to appoint Brian Wiles to the vacant seat that expires in twenty twenty five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the board of, I'm sorry, this is for the board of adjustment. Yes. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, Mr. Harden, Mr. Rice and Mr. Wiles are appointed to the board of adjustment. And again, we appreciate everyone's willingness to serve in these, uh, really important positions. If you have interest in serving in any city boards, uh, city, uh, these volunteer positions, please go, uh, to our website and check out the, the different boards that are available and we would love to get you plugged in. That takes us to the end of our city council agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn city council. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the city council meeting is now adjourned. At this time, I will call to order the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting for July eleventh, twenty twenty two. On the consent docket, we have minutes and poll attachments, agreements and a budget amendment. Is there a motion?
Before we make a motion, I just want to tell Lauren Smith, I did look through the poll, um, attachment licensing and it's, there is a lot of information there. So I am. Well, I'll do a shout out to Vernon and if he's not here, then you tell him thank you because it's, I mean, it's good information. Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the consent docket's approved. That takes us to item five, general orders. Five A is to receive an annual report from the Rural Water Advisory Board. Mr. Robert Sutton.
Robert Sutton, Rural, Stillwater, Oklahoma. Thank you for having me and giving my report. Want to thank you for a cool venue tonight because it is very warm outside and want to thank the, uh, city for providing the necessary water that's out there to cool us all down. Hopefully we can get a few more misters around town to mist us down as we're venturing around Stillwater. You probably have seen my report. Uh, don't really need to point much out except just the awareness stuff. Uh, you all can read that. If you have any questions, then, you know, we can get back with me on it and stuff like that because I don't want to push anything that's negative or whatever. There's areas that, that needs to be worked on in the city. We know this. And they need to be worked on because of the fact that you're shortage of people. It's hard to hire. Five percent, ten percent down in a lot of departments. Some water department is down twenty percent of people. So it's kind of hard to get everything done. This just kind of points a little bit of this out. And, uh, so maybe we need to go on a different hiring, hiring binge here in the city of Stillwater. Find out what is, is stirring people to, to work. Right now evidently it's not working, whatever it is, we need to reach out and get more people working for the city to fill in these spots. So that way you all can be one hundred percent fully funded of people. So all the projects can get done. We know that the one project out there, uh, Bill was telling me about, which is B on the third page. We don't have an engineer to complete, to oversee. We have funds, but no manpower. So please go on a hiring spree. That's all I can say. Everybody else is doing a good job. Thank you, men and women. Any questions?
Trustees, any questions?
Are you funding other rural water or having the same challenges with cities not having enough staff as well?
I think every company is having problems and every city is having problems. Oklahoma City is down also. They're, they're having problems of trying to hire.
For things that are needed to get done, is there any thought or any talk about, um, sharing resources and having, I mean, I know that probably everyone's busy, but utilizing someone else to come in and look at things that need to get done?
Um, well, that's, that may be why, what was on my report is I just utilize, I saw from an outsider.
Sure.
These things.
Yeah.
And so I'm not sure if they're being seen from the inside. And so I just want to point them out so then that way you all can be aware of what they are. And I'm, I don't want to beat a dead horse or, or anything like that. But once you become aware of them, then you all can address them.
Okay.
Uh, I, I can't come up with, I'm not in government. I'm just a volunteer. And so I can't tell you ways of, of fixing it because I'm not in there. But you've got a lot of people here that have a lot of knowledge, lot of knowledge. And, but it doesn't help if we don't have the manpower to fill that. Because I don't want either our mayor or Mr. Nichols out there running a backhoe.
You definitely don't want me doing it.
So that's where, you know, we need boots on the ground.
Right.
To fill these positions. Uh, water department, as, as I was talking with Bill tonight, you know, they're down twenty percent. So it makes it tough and that's all I'm seeing and that's all I'm reporting on is just the water department. I don't know how many other departments are down and I don't know what other percentages that they're down. But twenty percent can, can mean a big, big thing.
Yeah.
And I wish I had the answer on what to do with hiring, then I could do it within my own business. But I don't have the answers either.
Yeah.
So I just make it aware and let other smarter people take care of it.
Well, I, I feel like your report has got a lot of information in it that's helpful for us to have. And, and, um, I think it's, I think you're right. There may be some follow-up that needs to be done, um, after this meeting and certainly look forward to speaking to you.
And, and mine's only on awareness is all mine is.
Well, that's, you know, I mean, that, this is an issue that, um, for us as a board, you know, this is the kind of information that, that we need to have to see what's going on and get a sense of, of all of those different issues that are out there. So, um, but, but they're not the kinds of, um, issues that you can just come in tonight and for us to go, okay, yeah, let's do that or let's do this. I mean, they're, they're pretty complex for solutions. So we need to talk about them.
Some of them are long-term that has to be planned out long-term and others, you know, can be started to look at, you know, within the next day or two or whatever. But again, I'm not in the government. I'm, I'm just a volunteer seeing it from the outside and just bring these things just aware because I've been in the city since sixty six. And I think that we have a great city and we have great leaders. And, but all of us as volunteers need to step up whenever we see something and make people aware to make our city better. And that's all this is.
Sure.
All right.
Well, we appreciate your work.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Do we need a motion to receive the report?
You need to take action on it?
Okay. We do need to take action on item five B, which is to consider a bid award to Terex for two Digger Derrick trucks. Mr. Smith?
Good evening, trustees. Lauren Smith, Electric Utility Director. On March seventh, the trustees authorized expenditures for two Digger dairy trucks in the distribution division. The approved items required. The approved items required public bidding. Bid solicitations were prepared and advertised in accordance with the city's purchasing manual. Two bids are received and opened on April 27th and are tabulated in your report. Terex met all the bid specifications, making them the lowest responsible bidder and estimated a 12-month delivery time, which is rather good in these times they were in. The second bidder listed a 48-month lead times. I don't know how you do that. I do have a motion here. I will pause to answer any questions.
Trustees, any questions? Not only a 12-month delivery time, but actually under the estimated cost, which is also rare for this current climate.
We were shocked about that pleasantly.
Yeah.
Well, we wanna get that contract signed really quick.
Yes, let's go. What's your recommendation?
Motion to award the bid for two Digger Derrick trucks to Terex, authorize city manager to execute the contract in the amount of $574,902, and authorize expenditures up to $600,000, which is a contingency, includes a contingency for us.
Trustees, I would, well, I will make this recommended motion with, with one change, to authorize the general manager to execute the contract rather than city manager, just because we like to be really technical here. But I will go ahead and make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept staff's recommendation with that noted change. Please vote. That's approved with a vote of four to zero. Thank you, Lauren. I hope you bring the Digger Derrick trucks over for a meeting once we have them. We always like to see the new equipment.
Yep.
All right, that takes us to the end of the agenda, assuming there's no reports from the officers of the board. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn SUA. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the SUA is now adjourned. That takes us to Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting for July 11th, 2022. I will call this meeting to order. In consent docket, we have one set of meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Move to approve consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent. Please vote. It's approved with a vote of four to zero. Item 5A is consider the fiscal year 2022-2023 extension of professional services agreement with the Stillwater Chamber of Commerce. Mr. McNichol?
There was considerable discussion about this contract back in 2017. The contract was written with specific deliverables. Justin and I have discussed these and determined today that we probably, there is probably one provision in there that seems to, doesn't say it, but it says monthly reports. We assume that must be written, that it's kind of implied that maybe they should be written, and we will take care of that from henceforward. But as far as deliverables go, those have been met throughout the year. And we recommend extending the contract based on the 2020-2019 contract where there was a increase from $250,000 to $300,000 a year.
That was in 2019?
It was 2019, 2020, I believe.
And so this would be a one-year term under the same, the extension of one-year term?
It was done in 2019.
Okay. So we would be putting in a one, extending this for one additional year? Under the same terms?
Yes.
Trustees, comments, questions? I will just comment. This professional services agreement is for economic development services. It's a complicated task, and it's, I think, somewhat of a, you know, it's a competitive task. There's a lot of communities out there that are vying for the economic development sort of opportunities that we're also vying for. A big part of that is Stillwater putting their best foot forward when it comes to meeting with site selectors, meeting with companies and that sort of thing. And in terms of evaluating performance, you know, the best thing I think I can do is to talk to those folks who work with our chamber, and the feedback that I receive from them is all generally very positive about the folks that go out and have these meetings and that present Stillwater to people coming in from the outside. And that's really great to hear, you know, our folk, new partners at USA Rare Earth were very complimentary of Justin and his team in dealing with coming in and selecting Stillwater for their new project. And so that's what we hope to see out of this contract, and it's good to see. I will say that I think we need to continue, I'm happy to extend this term for a year. I think in, over the course of that next year, we need to continue to refine this contract and look at what else we can do from a services perspective and how else organization might be, other things might be organized, because it is continuing to evolve, this, this process. And, you know, these, these contracts, I think we, five years under the same terms is probably long enough. And so we wanna go back and make sure that we're asking for the right things and that the chamber is able to provide the things that we need as a city. And so I think it makes sense to extend it, but I do wanna work with our chamber over the next year to look at what, what may need to be updated or changed. Further comments, trustees? Mr. McNichol, did you, I assume your recommendation is to approve a one-year extension?
Yes, sir. Excuse me, yes, sir.
Trustees, comments, questions, or a motion on the item?
Motion to accept staff recommendation on the extension of the professional service agreement with the Stillwater Chamber of Commerce.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to extend the professional services agreement with the chamber. Please vote. That item's approved four to zero. That takes us to the end of the CETA agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn CETA. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, we are now adjourned, and that concludes our meetings for the evening. Thank you.